Hey, good evening. This is a calling to our meeting of the North Andover Select Board on July 20th, 2020, at just a little after seven o'clock. To that, I need to read a statement pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A 18 and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access proceedings as provided in the order. A member, a reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by tuning into Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. If you have public comments, please email to selectman@northandoverma.gov. And so with that, I'll just do a roll call for attendance. Let's just roll by first name.
Laura Bates here.
Phil D. Colagero here.
Richard Valencourt here.
Rosemary Smith Dealey here.
And Chris Nobley here. Okay. So we are gonna first begin with a public comment. And to this is a little change in our process, and that was connected with our agenda. And to that process, we asked people to send in a sheet where we have their name and number, and then we will dial out and contact them. Again, only people who made this request prior to the start of the meeting. Melissa, do we have anybody who stepped up to that?
Mr. Chair, I just refreshed, and we do not have any public comments tonight.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll get to test this next month. But a little change in process, and hopefully people will get familiar with that. Okay. So now we move into public hearings. I need to again open with a statement pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A 18 and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. These hearings of the north, of the town of North Andover are being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen to the hearing while in progress by tuning in Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. Members of the public attending this hearing virtually may be allowed to make comments if they do wish so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment by mailing selectman@northandoverma.gov. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to resume the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, Rosemary Smith Dealey moved that we resume the public hearing from our last meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And let's do a roll call here again. I think you're on mute, Laura.
Sorry about that, Laura Bates, aye.
Phil D. Colagero, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Rosemary Smith Dealey, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. Okay. And so I'd like to invite the folks from National Grid. I think we've got two folks, is that correct? Town manager to speak to this.
Yes, we have representative from National Grid as well as representatives from Avalon and RKG available on the phone for turn of this item.
Great. So gentlemen, please. Step four, as it were.
So my name is Paul Saffler. I'm an engineer for National Grid. Continuing from a couple of weeks ago, we had asked the town to allow us to install two new four-inch conduits from an existing manhole to service the new, the remodeled building at Avalon Bay, which is that. It's Water Street. And part of the reason it was, this petition was tabled was we, the town was going to notify our butters, I believe up to 600 feet away from the area, and so that they had the opportunity to speak. And also, they wanted to know how, if there was, if this moratorium wouldn't be lifted for us, then what impact would it have on Avalon Bay? And unfortunately, if this weren't allowed to happen, this would impact their ability to proceed to the different portions of the project. And if the moratorium was to be lifted, we would, National Grid would build or dig through the street and repave the street as required by the town and by the town engineer. Are there any questions or any other concerns existing from the town?
Mr. Chair, we did send the additional letters as requested by the board. The residents said to not receive them. Additionally, we have an updated letter from the town engineer in the packet recommending approval with conditions.
I appreciate that communication and really, again, giving us understanding of the full scope of what would transpire with this work. But let me look up to the rest of the board.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think from the last meeting, there were two questions. One of them, I believe, was just addressed by the town manager regarding notification to all of the butters along Water Street between Merrimack and Church. I guess my question would be, was there any input from any of those butters that was submitted? And the second question, open question, I think we had from last meeting was the dates that this was all going to occur. So I think those were the two open questions that I recall from the last meeting. If anybody else remembers anything else, let me know.
Headline.
There was no public comment from any of the additional butters that were notified.
Okay. And what about the start date and the approximate duration of the project?
Coming from National Grid, if this were to pass tonight, they plan on having this work done within the next few weeks. We can and will get a date for you when it will happen, but right now, that's the timeframe that we're working with. And the total amount of time to dig, install the conduit, and repave the street is approximately three days.
Well, that sounds pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other board members have questions or comments?
No, I'm off that.
Well, I would concur with Select Member Valencourt that, given that we haven't gotten a response from any butters and raising further issues, timeframe does seem to be pretty reasonable in that there's only three days of, less than a week of disturbance, we'll call it that. And that we'll end up with a street that's probably better than if we waited till afterwards where you would be cutting into the street. I think that's probably the plus side of doing it now. So I appreciate that response on this. And again, as much advance notice as we could give people on start and the timing of this, I think would be appreciated. We'll ask for a motion.
I just wonder if they understood that it's, it's a second time that's being asked. I hope that they're not thinking that it, that with our vote before, that it was, that we're probably not gonna move forward.
Well, the butters I spoke to, just to chime in here, I did explain to them that we tabled it so that we could notify the butters and let them know that this was being happening so they'd have an opportunity to express their concerns if they had any. So I mean, obviously, I didn't talk to everybody, but I did talk, the ones I did talk to, that's the way I explained it.
Mr. Chair, the updated notice did have today's date on it. So they were just the ones that we informed secondarily did have the date for today on the notice. Could I ask through you, Mr. Chair, to the selectwoman, Smith Dealey, because she would know much better than I would know, would the restaurants that are over in that area like Jade and Jamie's be busier on the weekends? I'm not really.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. They probably would be, but they'd be done the work in the evening, I would imagine.
Well, to that point, I think the Green Apple is a breakfast place.
Thanks, I was about to say that.
Having lived in a breakfast place family my whole life, the weekends were always the busiest.
You also have hairdressers over there, too, that I would think would be pretty busy on the weekends.
I think it's one of those things where you're never gonna get a perfect time for every business and every resident. It's, you know, I think we learned that when we made a robocall one time, and some people were really upset because we made the call at dinnertime. Other people were upset if we made the call in the morning. So it's something that, no matter what, it's going to impact people, folks differently. And some are gonna be happy and some aren't. And unfortunately, we have to do this work. I mean, I'll reiterate that comment, that we're doing this again quickly after all of, as Select Miss Dealey said, all the impacts that happened in that neighborhood, especially the very, very lengthy road job that went on down there. It's very, very unfortunate that we're doing this at this time and, you know, but whatever.
Your points are well taken about the weekend, so maybe it should be, you know, like a Tuesday through Thursday or something like that. I don't know. It's hard for us to judge. But I think you want to make this point that there's some pretty important weekend business that goes on as well with some of the merchants.
And if I can ask, I mean, if there's, if there's not been any actual additional feedback from the people who'd be impacted, doesn't that underscore, I think, I think Selectman Valencourt's point about how everybody is living a very different life from each other? And so if no one's providing the feedback, I mean, I would have been eager for feedback, but without that, I mean, I would say we'd wanna go the route where it's most efficient and least impactful for the business.
I think all good, good points, and I think that's, you know, why we take extra caution in extending the hearing to today, sending out the notice, making sure. But I think also putting National Grid once more, you know, on clear notice of how expectant we are that this is done efficiently and timely. And again, I would emphasize that the end product here will probably be better than if we waited till afterwards because we're gonna get curb to curb on this as opposed to, you know, slashing through the middle of a street that we had done fairly recently. So it's gotta be done one way or another if we wanna facilitate this project. But I think all, you know, all good things, we brought the light here. Are there any other concerns or comments that we should address? If not, I'll ask for a motion to close the hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move the Board of Selectmen close the public hearing to receive comments regarding the National Grid petition to install underground conduits for Water Street.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Select person, Dick Colagero. And we'll do a voice roll count. Laura?
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil D. Colagero, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Rosemary Smith Dealey, a, well, less than aye, but it is an aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. It passes unanimously, five zero vote, and we've now closed the public hearing. Okay. Let's move on to the approval of our minutes for the June 29th, 2020 open session. Any comments? Changes?
Chair, I move approval of the June 29th meeting minutes, open session meeting minutes.
Thank you.
Laura Bates, second.
Thank you. Let's do our roll call vote.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil D. Colagero, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Rosemary Smith Dealey, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. Okay. And then we have our July 2nd, 2020 open session minutes as written. Again, any comments, corrections, changes?
No, Mr. Chair, I move approval.
Thank you.
Laura Bates, second.
Do our roll call vote.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil D. Colagero, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Rosemary Smith Dealey, aye.
And Chris Nobley, aye. All right. Governmental reports. So the first one at the top is our COVID-19 update, and I know there's a bunch we're gonna cover here. So Melissa, I'm gonna turn it over to you and Brian and take us through where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with us today, we do have Health Director Brian LaBras, Department of Health member Patrick, Dr. Patrick Scanlon, and I believe the experts, and go ahead on your.
All right. I'll start off. So thank you, everybody, for having me here again. As Melissa said, I am joined by Dr. Pat Scanlon. He's one of our newer board members, and he's also our town physician now. He signs vaccine orders and all that fun stuff. So glad to have him here for his first electance meeting. Trying to go through a couple of quick numbers, just to run these by you. I'm sure you guys hear about them all the time on the news, but just to give you some perspective, mass numbers are pretty good, actually very good. So right now, today, as of 4:30, we had 174 new cases in Massachusetts as a whole out of 11,000 tests that were done, 107,000 cases overall positive. Mass only had one death today, which is a really, really good number. Currently, we have 498 hospitalizations across the state. So to give you some perspective, a few months ago, there were 4,000 hospitalizations, 2,000 cases per day, and 200 deaths per day. So those numbers have really gone down. We're trending in the right direction for a while, and I'm definitely happy about that. Locally, we've had a total of 359 cases, only 14 cases since July 1st, and we only have three active cases right now. So those numbers have definitely trended down, too. I think a lot of the success we've been seeing has to do with people wearing their masks and socially distancing and the amount of testing we're doing. One of the key tools we have is the testing and finding the asymptomatic people who have been determined to be close contacts from somebody who has tested positive. So the contact tracing has been huge. We've done it all in-house here through our public health nurse, who's done a phenomenal job, and school nurses who have helped out. We do have backup at the state level if we need it. We haven't had to use that yet, which is really good. So masks, availability of testing has been a huge success. Mass just launched their Stop the Spread campaign, which is there are eight free testing sites across the state. Our closest one is Lawrence Sherrill Hospital. To give them a little prop here, it's Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 4:30. You can call 978-946-8409 to set up an appointment, and it's free. You call up and make an appointment, you go and you get tested. So one thing that they're trying to do with that is catch the asymptomatic people. So I know there was a public official locally that just was gonna go away to Maine, called and got tested asymptomatic, and he was positive. So they're catching things like that, which definitely reduces the spread. They talked about an R-value for viruses, and that's the, that the transmission rate of the virus in COVID-19 right now is under one. So for every one person that tests positive, they're transmitting it to less than one person. So on average, that's a really good thing. We are seeing spikes across the country. I think there are different areas and pockets across the United States that are seeing huge upticks and spikes. A lot of people think that's because they opened up too early, they're not wearing masks, they're not doing the testing we are, and that definitely puts a damper on the rest of the country moving forward. Our long-term care facilities are doing really great. We haven't had any cases in our long-term cares for a while now, so they've kind of gone through that, and they're doing a really good job with maintaining their clean environments. They are doing outside visitors and things like that now, but that's been going on for a few weeks now, which is really good. We're monitoring businesses and working with them locally on all their different issues and questions and guidance. I know Andrew Shapiro, our Community Development Director, did a great job getting them PPE, masks and sanitizer. I don't think very many communities have actually done that, so I think that's a really good thing that Melissa and Andrew have done, that's phenomenal. And then one last thing that I wanna say before I pass it off to Patrick is I'd like to reemphasize masks and social distancing. So if you guys are out, you see people, say something if you want to, we're trying to keep this going. Social distancing and masks have been key in our success, and we wanna keep going in the right direction. I thought that when we started opening things up, we would see little spikes here and there, but that hasn't happened, and that's fantastic. So I wanna keep that going. We're starting to see a shift, though, in the age demographics of people testing positive, where it's shifting to a younger group. So if you have teenagers and no teens and younger people that are out there out and about, just remind them that if they get it, they can be asymptomatic and pass it to somebody who could have complications. So I'm trying to reemphasize that as much as we can. We definitely don't wanna go backwards. So with that, I'd like to pass it off to Patrick Scanlon.
Mr. Chair, may I ask you a question to?
Please, please.
Yeah. So Brian, what do you see as the next steps in the, or in the timeframe? So what are we gonna be going to next? What are we gonna be opening? What are we gonna be, what can we expect coming up?
Okay. I can only make an educated guess on that because I keep that very close to the lip at the governance level. But Phase Three, Step Two, I anticipate will come on the next couple of weeks, and they will ease up some more restrictions in terms of maybe numbers and gatherings, additional capacity in offices, businesses, restaurants, things like that. So they're gonna slowly start to pick things back up again, but they don't wanna go too far too fast. What you're seeing in Georgia, Texas, California is because they didn't, they had very low numbers, they just opened everything up, and then it kind of snowballs. So they've been trying to chip away at it and do, I know they said four phases, but we're in, you know, Phase Two, Step One, Phase Two, Step Two, Phase Three, Step One, going to Phase Three, Step Two. So whether it's four phases or eight phases, it doesn't matter, but they're taking smaller steps to keep things on the up and up.
Well, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, this would be for Brian or Dr. Scanlon. I don't know if you're, if they're asking for your input about the reopening of schools. Has that been discussed, or is it in the works to be discussed, or?
Yes. I have met with the superintendent a couple of times. I'm in constant contact with him and Shar Barzak, their nursing supervisor. We are also on weekly and almost daily conference calls with regional and state-level Department of Education and Department of Public Health on what they're seeing and how they're trying to move forward. So they're, they have their three, three phases, their three proposals due at the end of July. I think July 31st, they do it at Department of Education. They're working out all the logistics on that now. Guidance just came out actually on Friday about how to get their plans together and additional information such as student testing and things like that when the schools do go back into in-learning, in-person learning.
Another question, if I may, Dr. Scanlon and Brian. So, so they're offering free testing for people who don't show symptoms. Are we recommending that large masses of us take advantage of that in hopes of, unfortunately and hopefully not, by capturing someone who didn't know that they were possibly transmitting? What is your recommendation on that? Is that something we all should be taking advantage of, or only if you think you've been with someone who?
I would say, and I'll let Pat talk to this, talk about this after me. I would say if you think that you've been somewhere or in an environment where you think you may have come into contact with somebody, or you're going to visit somebody who's susceptible, or you're going on vacation, sometimes it's required, I would definitely recommend taking advantage of it. It's here, it's local, it's free. If you're gonna be going to visit an elderly parent, I think it is definitely appropriate and recommended.
Does the test show antibodies for those who got it and didn't know they have it, had it? Or is that a separate test?
That's a separate test.
I thought so, but I thought that would be kind of good information, too.
You know, one thing we are seeing, too, is more of a lag in the results. I think the labs across the country are getting taxed by the amount of tests they're getting because of the spikes across the country. So we are seeing a little bit more of a lag time in the response, but it's still there. We're still getting the tests back as soon as we can get them and taking the appropriate steps. But I do recommend getting tested if there's a need or desire, or you're gonna be doing something you think could be posing a risk to somebody else.
Thank you.
I guess it would be my turn to talk. Thank you, Brian. For the introduction, hi, everybody. Nice to meet you all virtually. Sorry?
Go ahead, that.
I said hi and welcome.
Oh, thank you very much. Nice to meet you all virtually. I am the new town physician. I've been on the Board of Health for now about a year and a half. I have very tough shoes to fill following Frank's departure as the town physician. Just a little quick background about me, I am a pulmonary and critical care physician. I currently practice for Dartmouth Hitchcock in New Hampshire and for Catholic Medical Center, both in Manchester and New Hampshire, and I cover the intensive care unit up there as well. So I have certainly been seeing my fair share of sick COVID patients up there. I have to say, from my standpoint, I agree with Brian 100% that if you are going to be having any known exposure such as vacation, going to see loved ones, and, or just going up, out and about into a more of a social setting, it would be worthwhile if you're asymptomatic to be tested, but I wouldn't advocate for everybody just to go out and be tested, kind of willy-nilly, for the lack of a better word. But if, again, if you know you're gonna be having any type of exposure, I would highly recommend it. From my standpoint, right now, the amount of hospitalizations has dramatically decreased in both Massachusetts and New Hampshire. Right now, in our hospital, we have three COVID patients. One of them is critically ill, two of them are minor symptoms, but that seems to be the general trend both in Massachusetts and New Hampshire. And again, I have to say, I would attribute most of, if not all of, that decrease to wearing masks in public and social distancing. I probably can't stress that enough. The masks are simple enough to do, simple enough to wear. You are not increasing your carbon dioxide levels by wearing masks. They are 100% safe, and I am a 150% advocate for that, and it seems to be clearly doing a very good job. Definitely welcome for any questions for anybody, for sure.
Mr. Chairman, a question of Dr. Scanlon. I was just, have we made any progress on the antibody testing? And if you have the antibody, does that, does it stay with you? Does it provide immunity?
So, good question. The main body of evidence that we're seeing So, good question. The main body of evidence that we're seeing is. There is hundreds of different strains of the coronavirus. Typically, the coronavirus causes the common cold. Um, unfortunately, what we're seeing is that. Um, prior antibodies that have been tested for other strains of the coronavirus, for some reason, the human body does not. Make it as an aggressive antibody response um, to other strains of the coronavirus. Typically, what we're seeing is ranging anywhere from a few weeks up until max, I've seen the data is anywhere between six to eight months. Um, I do not recommend and the CDC is not recommending as well for patients to go out and get antibody testing right now. Uh, the main reason is because it can give a false sense of security for. People saying, well, I have antibodies to COVID nineteen, now I can kind of go freely about my business. But the um, the data is not supporting that this is long-term antibody response. Um, and typically what we're seeing is the patients who are actually the sickest. Um, ICU patients on ventilators mount the longest antibody response and that is roughly about six months of what I'm seeing in the data. Um, I know Pfizer is one pharmaceutical company that's working on a. Super vaccine that's almost trying to create a super immune response in the human body. Initial trials seem to be fairly positive. Um, I have my own theory that I believe that if a vaccine comes out. I shouldn't say if, I'll say when a vaccine comes out, this may be a vaccine with a booster or perhaps something that we will be taking. On a yearly basis, something like a flu shot where we're going to need to have repeated boosters. Um, but the data that I'm seeing in all the literature is fairly positive of a vaccine coming out. Um, the question is more so not if, but when. Um, but I uh, do not promote the antibody testing at this point because of the poor immune response. Um, and given the false sense of security.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? I just have uh, one then, and that is um, because we're uh, coming into the um. The school here, we're going to be looking at large facilities. Has there been any um, data about the effectiveness of uh? Cleaning process for large uh, facilities? Uh, or ones where there are lots of people going through those facilities?
I, I'll probably defer that over to Brian, but I will say from a school standpoint, um, there is a mixed literature. There is one study out of France that looked at a small um, school district for how France is divided and um. Brian, I think you might have to mute your, um, I'm getting feedback. Um, there is a study out of France that looked at a school district. Um, that looked at two children that were COVID positive and they subsequently sent out screeners. To about a hundred and fifty kids that were exposed to those two kids. Um, those two kids got it from out in the community, not within the school. And none of those a hundred, none of those one hundred and fifty kids uh, were positive, ended up testing positive for COVID. Some of that rationale is that um, typically kids have a lower forced title volume for forced exploratory capacity. Um, they don't transmit the disease as far with an exhalation as adults do, which typically makes sense. They're younger, smaller, one capacity. Um, so that's reassuring data. Um, there's on the flip side, the. Social aspect of needing kids to have a more of a structure, um, going back to school. Um, and what parents will do um, that work full-time. Um, so that's a completely different aspect, but just from a healthcare aspect. Um, there seems to be reassuring data um, about transmission of the disease. Um, but I'll turn it over to Brian as far as the cleaning portion for larger scale buildings like schools.
Okay, uh, so the cleaning portion of it would be your typical hard surfaces, um, wipe downs, desk, door handles, thing like that is standard. One of the best things that they can do is ventilation and airflow. One of the things that they've looked at in some of the studies, some of the clusters they've had to kind of analyze is. Uh, lower indoor air quality or air, air movement, air flow is a leading cause of indoor transmission. Uh, outdoor transmission is next to nothing because of the dispersion of the virus in the outside air. So they have basically hypothesized that air movement inside is a good thing. I know um, if they can get their windows open, things like that is one of the best things they can do. To keep that air flowing and movement dispersed the virus because if you're in a small setting with low air movement. Your um, the time that you're there with somebody who's infected increases your uh, intake of the virus, which will get you to that threshold where you then. Actually catch the virus and get sick. Your body can't fight it off. So your exposure rate over time equals getting sick. So if you can lower that exposure rate by moving the air out of there, that is one of the best things you can do to keep indoor settings safer. So clean your hard surfaces, your droplet, where your droplets land, the virus is still active and alive and can be transmitted. So where the virus lands. Where you touch, when you have to touch your face, touch your hands, um, open your desk, use a pencil, give it to your friend, things like that. So. That's where they're going to concentrate on, I believe.
You know, Brian, um, was nice to really kind of gave me a thought that especially with. If and when the kids go back to school, hopefully it's, it's when and the weather is still warm, that perhaps some of their class. Studies could be done outside on, you know, sitting on blankets or mats or something. Um. Again, to kind of.
I think that's a great idea. I'd love to go to school outside.
Well, we all have done it. You know, you have a reading session or, or whatever or um. Yeah, that could be a kind of a fun way of getting them back to school and keeping some of the transmission maybe down a little bit if, if. Hopefully not at all. Um, but uh, anyways, just made me think of it. So when you're talking to them, you maybe could recommend.
Okay.
A few classes outside.
I definitely will.
So Brian.
Any other questions?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Brian, it sounds like with the schools and any enclosed environment, really, you're really. Want to make sure that those windows are working and that we can throughout the seasons, keep those windows open and what, like, do they recommend fans or?
Just air movement in general. So if you can turn the HVAC up, get some air movement, if you have windows, uh, all that does help. Um, and that's what they're talking about, social distancing in schools by having the desks and they did some studies and they've realized like what Patrick was saying. The, the transmission from younger uh, the younger population isn't as great because they don't breathe it as far, which is why they gave the school's guidance this past week. That the desk can be three feet apart and you're not in a high stress environment, you're not breathing heavy, you're not working out, you're not. You know, running or anything like that, like in a gym where the equipment has to be fourteen feet apart. So they've kind of determined that. You can be closer in a school setting because you're not exerting and breathing heavy and shedding a lot of virus.
And perhaps they should go back to the traditional um, chairs and desks in rows, everyone looking forward so that. Versus having them in small clusters where they're like, oh, almost face to face. I don't, I. I wouldn't want that anyways because I wouldn't want someone staring at me all day, but um, but perhaps the traditional classroom setting might be more advantageous.
Exactly, yeah. Get them back into rows and columns, separate it apart, yeah.
Brian, um, is there any? I may have missed, missed, this may have gone over my head, but is there conversations between the health um, folks in the different communities in the area so that there's a consistent response and it's a little bit less patchwork?
Yes, um, I'm actually on two.
I remember that was specifically regarding the schools, by the way. I, I think in a new culture broadly, but I, I, I didn't know. On the school piece, there was that consideration because every community integrates their health department differently with their schools. But yes, I would love, uh, overall, I'd love to know about the coordination, but also just the school because. So much of us, so many of us cross those borders and you know, uh, I think that consistency is important and, and may help. Regardless of what the decision is, may help make things easier for families overall if they see families all around them.
Yeah.
In it together with whatever that decision is.
I think a lot of, a lot of that's coming down from the state. Um, I do meet with our superintendent and our school department, Cheryl here on a, a very regular basis. Um, my colleagues around the area also meet with theirs as well. So each school district is a little bit different depending on the unions. Depending on their building setup and how they work their entire districts where some of them have older schools, smaller classrooms. That will pose different challenges for that district. So each district has its own unique set of circumstances they're trying to look at, but. I do talk to my colleagues. Uh, I'm on a local Zoom call once a week and a Northeast regional Zoom call once a week. As well as a couple of DPH statewide calls uh, twice a week. So we're getting it. We're talking to DESC, DESC on a regular basis as well. So we're getting it from different angles and trying to coordinate as much as we can. But with each unique district having their own set of circumstances that they're determining what's best for their situation. So hopefully DESC does give broader guidance that the districts can then tailor it to what they need. But they'll get a set of um, criteria to basically go by.
In the North Shore, Superintendent Ian and the Merrimack Valley Superintendents have also been meeting um. Being superintendent have two tin cans and a string at this point, but uh, he has been working with them um, and meeting with them pretty consistently.
Well, I think uh, it's like Gerald's point about communities being consistent. I do see one thing within our community that's certainly been helpful and that's the uh, attitude and the orientation of local businesses, which I think. Again, I, I give Melissa and, and your team credit for, for really making it easy for these businesses. To prepare and be comfortable with having uh, running, operating their businesses safely. And I think that consistency, that broadness has helped, it reinforces it across the community. So. Um, I just also wanted to, to recognize that because I do think that also is what's fit into this.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm glad you brought that up because I have been approached by several of the small businesses and in particular the restaurant businesses. That were so thrilled at how the town staff all came together and Brian, you were part of that staff. Um, amongst, you know, Melissa and Lori and others, that we, we were up and running with the restaurant so quickly. And um, people really, really appreciated that and basically saying. Uh, we were doing better than most of the other communities and getting our restaurants up and running. And I also, having said that to our fire department, when the state lifted the uh. The smoke detector certificate, we had a huge backlog of properties that needed that. The fire department absolutely stepped up on that. We're just, you know, just banging those right out. So. I wanted to take that opportunity, seeing how that you were commenting on that. They, they really deserved the kudo, so. All good.
So hopefully we can ask you back uh, next month and uh, the update will continue to be strong, but certainly. Of, as always, if something urgent pops up, you know, we've got a great network of communication in this town and uh, you know, I really appreciate. Uh, you, Brian and Dr. Scanlon, how you uh, are really tuned into this for our community. We really count on this and it's been, it's been great. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Alright, you need me? Call me anytime.
Got it.
Alright, bye, everybody.
Right, take care.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could we take item five C out of order so that we could take Jessica since she's here with us now?
Absolutely, absolutely. So this is regarding the Sustainability Committee uh, a Zoom event scheduled for July twenty eighth and thirtieth, right? Alright, go. Tell us.
Yes, so I am so excited. Um, there was a post on Facebook through Make Ma, um, Keep Massachusetts Beautiful. And they were talking about a free Zoom webinar, which personally I love anything free, especially anything that can help, you know, our town to uh. To do better with recycling, you know, to reach our sustainability goals. So I signed us up for two sessions because I work myself. So I understand that only one session wouldn't really be enough of what we need. So I set up one session on Tuesday, July twenty eighth, so this coming. Next Tuesday, not this coming Tuesday, next Tuesday for ten AM. And then there will also be one on Thursday at seven PM so that no matter what your work schedule is, hopefully you can join us. You can. You know, we can talk trash, talk recycling, get some of those, you know, myths debunked, find out what goes on in our town. And what we can do to all work together to keep our own town beautiful, which of course will keep Massachusetts beautiful and I'm so excited if you can't tell. So I'm very excited. I hope you guys can join us. I have been trying to find anything, you know, to help our town out in these endeavors and. You know, with COVID, it's been such a setback, you know, with the, with the plastic bags coming back in, reusable bags being banned. So I'm really hoping that. This will be an opportunity to, to get back to, you know, looking towards our sustainable goals. I, I want to get back to it. Our town deserves it, our state deserves it, and our world deserves it, especially for our kids. So. Join us Tuesday, ten AM or Thursday, seven PM. Check us out on the North Andover Sustainability um, Facebook page. I'll be posting a whole lot more. And yeah, there's the events posted there. Reach out to us via email and they sustain at northandoverma.gov. We're happy to answer any questions that you have and yes, any questions at all, just let me know and we're happy to help out in any way we can.
That's great. That's great. So uh, can I ask that uh, our fabulous Sarah make sure she gets a good push out uh, on this as, as a support too? Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Any other uh, uh, thoughts from uh, the select board?
Hey Jessica, this is Dick Van Quaid. So what's the format going to be? Is it going to be like an open roundtable discussion or is it going to be moderated? How, how are you going to go about doing this? It sounds great. Just wondering what the format is going to be like.
Yes, so it's going to actually be hosted directly through Massachusetts Beautiful. They will be doing a presentation on it. Um, you know, their goal is to keep it fun and interactive and then, so they're going to do a presentation and then afterwards, they're going to have time for questions and answers. Um, I've always set this up for North Andover. Um, my hope is that anybody that's interested will join in. So you know, even if surrounding communities. Are not setting up their own, their own thing and want to join in with us, that's perfectly okay as well. The more, the merrier. Um, but yeah, it's going to be presentation style and then uh, questions afterwards.
Great.
Well, excellent. We will look forward to that and uh, got me as an attendee.
Yes, awesome. I, I do have to hop off, but I hope you guys have a wonderful evening. Thank you so much for having me. Good night.
Thank you, Jessica. Take care. Good evening, now. Okay, uh, so back to our, so that, that'll be, uh, that should be very interesting. I, I do hope people participate. Um, and now an update on the recruitment for our Commission on Inclusion, Equity and Diversity. Melissa, you're back on uh?
I'm back. Uh, so we, we do have um, two appointments that are on tonight under a new business. Um, and that is Bria Gadsen from Merrimack Valley, Black and Proud Allies, as well as the representative from the Council on Aging. I know that our um, Subcommittee for Appointments did some interviews tonight. Um, we have put a call out for residents. Um, residents, our residents, minority business owners and residents who speak English as a second language. Um, we have started to see those applications come in, which is great news. Uh, we also have asked all of the committees and commissions that have not yet. Um, met uh, this summer to meet and go ahead and get us their uh, member as well. Um, the staff have all been assembled. Um, Rick Gorman is actually going to have a um. Aisha, his new um, is one of his newest employees as his representative, which is going to be fabulous. We're really excited about that. Um, and so the committee is really coming together. Um, and I'm hoping that by our August meeting, we'll be fully assembled. Um, one thing that we are trying to do in the meantime is start this North Andover Conversation Series. Um, I've reached out to a few people as potential moderators. If any of you have any recommendations, please feel free to email me that. Um, we're looking to get someone to come in and, and, and start the conversation and be that, that moderator and that facilitator um, for that first call. We're looking to get someone to come in and start the conversation and be that moderator and that facilitator for that first call.
I'm excited to see, I'm excited to see how quickly the town staff, departments, and different boards and committees move to making sure that this is staffed up. And so I would enthusiastically move that the Board of Selectmen confirm the appointments of Bria Gadsden and David Van Arsdale to the Commission for Inclusion, Equity, and Diversity.
I'll second that.
Great. Any discussion? If none, let's do our roll call.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Rosemary Smidely, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. And welcome our first appointees to this as a board. So I think we should let Select Person Valencourt continue with his, with his gracious welcoming of all volunteers who are appointed.
Boy, I gotta pull that one out of the archives. I just want to thank the new volunteers and all the current volunteers for your service to the town. It's truly the, your service that makes the town a great place to live, work, play, and learn. So thank you very much for your service. It's really appreciated and it really is what makes the town run so well. So thank you.
I did, I had a question, Mr. Chairman or Melissa. So for for those outside, how will they know or have we already alerted them that they have this appointment? And we'd like them to place an individual on it. Has everyone been alerted? Just, it was, it was a question asked tonight at our Appointment Subcommittee. And I mean, I'm assuming-
Either Lori or I, yep, either Lori or I have reached out to every committee on the commission that has an appointment. And we also reached out to the Interfaith clergy for North Andover and Andover, asking them for a North Andover appointment. And so every group has now been contacted. And now we're just waiting for them all to assemble and send who they want.
Thank you.
So our hope is then at our next meeting, we'll be, we'll be fully formed at that point. Would that be our, okay, great.
Yes.
Just in time for the school year. Knock on wood.
Knock on wood.
There you go. Okay. I think that covers our governmental reports. So moving on to consent items, let me just read through those. We've the appointment of election workers. So we take a minute and just kind of walk through that because it is kind of a formalization of a process that we want to now do ongoing. Melissa, can you give us a little bit of thumbnail on that?
Yep, so state law requires that annually, all election workers are appointed by the Board of Selectmen. So this is us moving forward with doing that.
Okay, great, great. And then the request of the North Andover Merchants Association to use the Town Common on July 29th, 2020, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. for their awards ceremony. And this is an accommodation for them. Since not able to do this in any other form, now the fashion, and it's great to be able to offer the Town Common for this. Our third item is accepted donation of a calibration kit valued at $5,900 from Columbia Gas to the Fire Department. Thank you. Valuable. And then an affordable unit resale at 109 Cortland Drive. Are there any discussion on any of these items or any issues anybody wants to address before we, before you hear a motion on this?
Mr. Chair, I believe that the Board of Selectmen approve all matters contained under the consent items as presented.
Great.
Second.
Thank you, Rosemary. And roll call, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Rosemary Smidely, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. Okay. On to new business. So now we're going to vote on the National Grid petition for Water Street. And so we have the materials as we chatted earlier, so let's open up that discussion. Feel we covered it all.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve National Grid petition number 29226500 for pole and conduit work on Water Street as presented.
Thank you.
Laura Bates, second.
Thank you. Any other discussion in addition? All right, I'll just ask for a roll. Vote again, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Rosemary Smidely, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. Great. We pass this. A vote of five to zero. Okay. Now, the next item on our list is, let's see, Affordable Housing Trust voted to provide $60,000 to the Long Term Rental Assistance Program, currently being administered by the Greater Lawrence Community Action Association. And per town bylaw, the Board of Selectmen must approve the disbursement. Any, any other?
Laura, do you want to speak on this? I guess-
Do you have any questions? So do you want me to explain it or?
If you would, just take a moment, Lori. That'd be appreciated.
Okay, so we currently have a long-term rental assistance program that is being administered by Greater Lawrence Community Action Council. The funding for that program was our home funds that we receive every year. Those have now depleted as of this month. And there has been a need, discovered mostly through the COVID crisis, that there are families in need. So they would like additional funding, which the Affordable Housing Trust is supporting. And we are also asking for our home funds to go to this program as well. So it'll be a total of about $100,000 to the long-term rental assistance program.
In addition to what we've already administered, correct, or distributed?
Well, this is separate. So the, the COVID Emergency Rental Assistance Program, that will be ending on September 30th. This program was one we actually, as a board, were discussing before all of this happened. We were getting the paperwork in place and getting the funding in place. We were, you know, moving in that direction and then COVID happened. So we decided to change to the emergency program. And now that that is coming to an end, it was through that program that Greater Lawrence identified additional families that could benefit from a long-term program, which is a 12-month program for them to become self-sustaining with their rental payments.
Great. That's a very nice kind of one-two. So I'll hear a motion if there's no other discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
Second.
There's no further discussion. A roll vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Rosemary Smidely, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. Great. Really glad that we're continuing this.
Thank you.
And we want to confirm the town manager's appointment of Christian Caldwell to the Board of Assessor. So Melissa, if you could, just give us a quick thumbnail on that.
Sure. So we have three wonderful applications. Attorney Caldwell raised, came to the top. He is a local attorney. And I think having that expertise on the board is going to be very helpful. We are very excited to see three new faces, though, and we'll certainly keep the other two in our pile as we're looking for more volunteers. But we're very excited to welcome Caldwell to the-
Could I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I motion acceptance of the town manager appointment of Chris Caldwell to the Board of Assessors.
Second.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Um, just a point of order before we vote. Did you want me to clarify the term so that it shows in that motion of June 30th, 2020?
Yep.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. I'm sorry. Even as I'm reading it, I'm saying 2020 as I see the 2021. Yes.
Thank you. Let's accept that friendly amendment clarification. Okay, let's do our roll vote.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Rosemary Smidely, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. And, great. And then with the appointment, oh, we did that. We took that a little bit out of order, I think. Phil, you got us rolling on that early.
I jumped, I jumped on that. And then I was like, I'm looking down on my phone and I'm like, wait, that's, yeah. Whatever. We, well, we knocked that off.
Yeah, no, we're eager to get it done. All good, all good. Okay, so I think we're on to old business. Do you have any, I don't think we have any old business in that sense. Town Managers Report.
Thank you. So we do have the attached job posting vacancy log. As you know, we do have a pretty tight hiring freeze in place. We have hired a few positions that were considered essential. For instance, the administrative assistant at the Veterans Office. And we are holding off on a lot of other positions right now until we're fully staffed and back in the offices. Currently, we're only allowed to be in the building at 50% occupancy. And so we're, we're kind of moving through these a little slowly. I do have a couple of other just quick updates. We have found out much to ease dismay that the MMA conference this year will be virtual. That was announced tonight. And I know many of you will be sad about that. Final of the times, I guess. So, but good information for us to have. We did complete the, with the Long Term Advisory Committee for the Stevens Estate, the survey through Flashvote. For those of you that haven't seen it, those survey results are now available. We had 674 participants. Seventy-seven percent who took the test, that took the survey that we mailed out, which is actually really good for our first survey. I was really happy to see that. When we, you sign up for Flashvote, you don't know what the survey topics are going to be. So it's a really interesting way for us to get information from kind of a wide range audience because people don't know what they're going to be giving you their opinion about. So that's great. Our contract allows you six of those a year. This is one of the first one. But I think it's really nice to get the public's feedback in a different way. The Long Term Advisory Committee also has a website where you can give your opinion and thought to in kind of more of a written format, not just by answering the survey questions, although this was rather open-ended. So we're, we're happy to see that feedback. I did make just a recommendation of something to look into to the Long Term Advisory Committee today, which I did CC to the board, not trying to influence their decision at all, but just something else that I thought maybe they should explore as they're doing their due diligence, which is great. I did want to update the board that our budget or our revenues for fiscal year '20 have been closed out. We're just finishing the actual budget. Sometimes we get kind of bills that come in at the last possible minute. So we're not quite to the point, we have closed out, but we're not quite to the point where we can report yet what our surplus was. But as far as revenues go, we did have our revenue surplus for fiscal year '20 of $804,561, which is a positive thing moving into fiscal year '21 when we've been worried about those revenues. We collected 98.5% of our real estate taxes, 99.3% of motor vehicle tax. And that was with the board extending those due dates and the late fees. So I think that's huge to be really proud of. Licensing and permits, so building permits, et cetera, were at 99.9% of what we forecasted. Fines were at 92%, ambulance was at 16%. And so I think that we really ended the year in a very positive way. And we're feeling very confident about that as we're moving into fiscal year '21. The big concern being at this point, of course, local aid. I don't think we'll know about that for, for a while. Pond is still closed. We are continuing testing daily on weekdays when our testing is over. We are talking to a consultant about potential fixes for this year as well as long-term things so that we don't have this continue to happen year after year. We will update again the public on the numbers tomorrow. They've been kind of varied. The major reason has been the drought, fortunately. When you don't have that movement of water from rain, it can cause these issues. And we're keeping a very close eye on that. I, I do want to thank Rick Gorman and his team because between the ponds, our summer camps, and Sunday concerts, they've really been superheroes in many ways. We've had a few Sunday concerts so far. They both have gone so smoothly and it's not easy. The musicians have to be 10 feet apart, the crowd has to be 25 feet back from musicians. There's a lot of metrics in place to make sure they're safe, but they've been doing it. So kudos to them and to the public for coming and really being diligent and team players. We actually managed to fill, we had two bands who were not willing to comply or could not comply with social distancing guidelines. Rick was making a point. And so really excited about doing that for the summer. We do have a new fire truck this week. I know Selectwoman Bates, as well as Selectman Valencourt, were there to see that get literally pushed into service. And I think that's all I have.
Well, that's great. Certainly the revenue piece, that's, that's the piece that's kind of most in our direct control. Having, you know, 98, 99% compliance collection. Honestly, that was my biggest concern. That's the one piece that is a huge multiplier. So I think that says a lot about our approach. It says a lot about the people in the town. And, you know, I think that, that certainly bodes well, knock on wood, looking forward. And I appreciate the little bit of update because I think there's a tendency right now to be a little anxious seeing how other communities are dealing with this. So I think, you know, the way you and Lynn Savage, you know, really jumped on this, the whole team, I think is really helpful as we head into the fall. So-
I would have the weekend call from other communities that have heard about the MOU and asking for copies of it so that they can approach their school committee and their finance committee in, in order to follow the same suit. Because there's a lot of communities that have not managed to have their town meeting yet. And so that's-
Any other additions from Select Board members to the man, school, Town Managers Report?
Madam Town Manager, is there a way that we're reaching out to people beyond the Flashvote? I mean, which is awesome and I think it's great. I just know that there's probably a portion of the community that isn't online and doesn't, you know, doesn't see that.
Yeah, the great thing about Flashvote is that, you know, we, we did a lot of press on it and we did actually a commercial on it as well. And if you don't have the internet, they'll actually call you or send you a text if you just have a phone and say, hey, you've got a survey. And you can actually kind of sign up to call a number and take it too, which is pretty cool. But they have a separate website, which we haven't sent out in a while, that they did a couple of months ago, probably before COVID, where you could just log in and just give, you know, your comments about Stevens Estate, what you would like to see for the future of it. But we can reshare that and do some more press on it that people are reminded of it again.
Yeah, I think that would be great. Thank you.
Any other input for the Town Managers Report? Well, thank you, Melissa. Much appreciate that. So I'll kind of then roll that over to Select Board Update. So kind of a roll call or a root? Or anything?
I don't have any, no.
So it's funny, as I'm sitting here, my iPad is pinging because I guess unbeknownst to me, or probably because we're in a meeting, there were questions about the excise tax bill. And it's all a blur because I know that we had a conversation earlier tonight, Melissa. But just to be clear, for residents in town who have questions about whether they ever received their first and Their first notice. We have records of when the bills were mailed out to individuals. We keep track of all of that, correct?
Yeah, so I've, the office, the Treasurer's Office assessing and I have been getting a lot of calls on this today. I am able to look and actually pinpoint the date and exact time that the bills were sent out. The original bill, the original demand was sent out in February. What happened basically is that what people are getting now is their second notice, right? And this is when you have your. And this second notice is much later than usual because we extended the due dates. So typically you get your original demand in February and then your second notice, you know, the end of March, right? Are six weeks later. We extended the due date and so the second demand isn't coming till now. And so I think, I think. Happening because I'm going to tell you all a secret. I also got a demand in my town. I think what people is happening is that they're thinking. They're forgetting it's been four months. I was like, I never got an original bill. It's been four months and people may have forgotten or misplaced. Or never saw in all the chaos that first bill. But I, I did reach, I not only checked people's individual bills when they called today. We also reached out to the company and we have exactly the same payment percentage as we had last year at this time. And so I'm confident that the bills were in fact.
That's, so that's an important stat right there. And by the way, so you don't feel left out or feel like isolated. I also received a demand, but I also likely got the original bill and put it in the recycle bin or got colored on or something. So. I judge you not, Madam Town Manager, and I would gladly pay that extra fee because of my own. But that, that stat is actually important that we are hitting the same exact benchmark that we did last year, which actually there we, even with everybody getting the bill on time. We shouldn't be based on the economy, right? And so that, that we are means. Like this is again an isolated, isolated incident. But yes, they could call you up and confirm when that bill was sent out.
I'm going to look at the badge numbers and confirm as well as with the registry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dick, anything to add for us?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Rosemary?
I already said mine thanking the Fire Department and our, our SCAPA Community Development for getting. Businesses up and running and the restaurants as quickly as they did. So I'm good, but it warranted saying it again.
Only thing I would add is two, two quick things. One, I hope people continue to look at ClearGov. It's such a great, great website. Really gives a wonderful profile of our community, kind of what's happening. Those are, I think, important these days to kind of identify the value and kind of where we are. And the last thing is a sort of a pitch. About a month and a half ago, we approved a policy for flying flags. On our poll and I wondered whether we've had any other requests. Have we had any requests? For July or August, Melissa?
So we had one group reach out about a flag, but it was not, and off the top of my head, can't remember who it was, to be honest, but it was not a town resident who made the request. Mr. Chair, I think you might have been on the email. Do you remember who it was?
Yeah.
Indian, right?
Yes, Indian, yes, August 15th, Indian Independence Day.
And she, and it was, it's a statewide thing. So we had. We had asked her if a resident could send in the request.
That's right. I remember that, too.
Great. Well, I just hope that, you know, groups that, you know, avail themselves of the opportunity. I think it's, it was wonderful our first month in and I hope it continues. All right, with that, our next meeting is way at the end of August, the 31st. So hopefully that means, you know, the heat will be cooling down and schools will be about ready to go. We'll find out. And with that, I'll ask for a, a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
And our last roll vote tonight.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Richard Valancourt, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. Take care of all.
Good night.
Stay safe. Good night, all.
Good night. Good night, everyone.